Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education on Tuesday, September 13th, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for our first board meeting of the new school year. I'd like to take a short minute to introduce Mr. Scott Hummel and Mr. Michael McBay. They're running for school board. They're in the audience tonight. Do you have any questions for them? As well as Mr. Trustee Brilliant and Trustee Valenti are running as well to re-up their seats on the board. I have one kind of general announcement. The board looked at all the intensive bond work that went on this summer and the personnel required to do that. We're looking forward to next year. Not quite as intense, but similar amounts of work. I think Mark would agree to that. So we're going to put off the deep dive into balanced calendar for another year. We don't think we have enough resources right now to do it justice. And we have a couple, I guess, the county level issue and kind of the CTE calendar, a couple of big obstacles. So we're going to stealthily work on those this year to lay some groundwork for next year. So that committee that we said we were going to form by the beginning of next year will be delayed for a year at least, or not at least, maybe earlier next fall. So on that note, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Would anyone like public comment?
Ann Hirst Kreitz, on behalf of the Foundation for Celine Area Schools, thank you so much for all your support these last eight months that I have been in this new position. Just wanted to update you a little bit about what's been going on this summer and a couple of different events that are coming up in the next few weeks. First of all, we are proud to say that we have 26 new corporate sponsors that are partnering with the foundation, which we're very excited about. This weekend, we have two big events going on. Friday night is the patio event for the Hall of Fame at Hornet Stadium. We'd love you to come out from 5:30 till about halftime where our Hall of Famers will be announced on the field. And then Saturday night, we're having our special Hall of Fame banquet at the Commons and looking forward to listening to our Hall of Famers speak a little and be officially inducted. Also, two weeks from today, on September 27th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Celine High School gym, we are having our big fall kickoff where we are announcing and excited about our Hornet Hub, which is our strategic grant this year we've been working very hard on. So please come. Again, thank you for all your support. You have all been wonderful and I appreciate it deeply.
Thank you, Ann Hirst. Is there any other public comment? Administration?
Just wanted to kind of give a broad, too many people specifically to thank, but I really do appreciate all of the work that went into getting this school year underway. As President Heinig noted, the work that was done this summer was large. It was all encompassing. We really did touch every building. Obviously, a couple areas, particularly the site work done between Heritage and Woodland Meadows, as well as the renovations at Pleasant Ridge took center stage, but there was a lot of work that went into making sure that this school year opened without any real issues. And I'm very proud of the fact that the staff, teachers, the support staff, certainly the administrators who were in all summer worked diligently to make sure that our students and families experienced quality day one. I noted another district locally, four of their elementaries are closed for a couple of days in terms of relative to some changes that were made, and I'm very proud that we're not in that room. So it does happen where there are things, situations occur, and districts don't open on time after renovations, and I'm very proud that we're not one of them, frankly. And the school year's off and going. All I have.
Just one backed-up sewage.
We bunked it out pretty quick.
A little minor incident, so it's good to know. Board of Education members, any?
Yeah. In addition to the wonderful announcements that are coming up, the teachers' grants, the foundation does a wonderful job with teachers' grants every year, encouraging teachers to be creative in instruction that they want to do in their classrooms and apply for some creative grants. And that application, we want to encourage as many of the teachers as possible to participate in that. The applications are online this year and due in October 10th. So I encourage all these creative new teachers to think about what kinds of wonderful things that we want to do in your classrooms. So I want to encourage you all to do that.
Anybody else?
Just a quick thank you to the Transportation Department for a smooth start to the school year as well. Seems like it's going on without a hitch, so thank you for getting our kids here safely.
Kind of a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? None, motion carries seven to zero. Scheduled reports, new staff introductions.
All right, new staff introductions. This has been, it was an interesting summer. I will tell you that we had as much or more hiring than at any time in my, certainly my superintendent's tenure relatively. We had administrator posting up from early April through the, really almost through the start of school. And in addition to that, numerous teacher positions and other faculty positions were hired. So many of those faces are here. I don't know if Mr. Ellis wants to talk about this, as the group kind of, this is going to be a little bit like herd and cattle. The group kind of come over to this side, and one by one, you'll come across, hit the microphone, and tell us a little bit about you.
As they're coming up, go ahead and come up. As they're coming up, just kind of put it in perspective, we hired 33 new teachers since June 30th, and that represents over 10% of our teaching staff. And so a number of people, and as Mr. Green said, the hiring has continued right until last week. We've got two teachers that will start with us for the first day next Monday. So we've given them a little prep. We asked them to come in after teaching today or doing their job and to give us kind of the essential information, name, rank, and serial number, if you will.
Yeah. So I think I was the last one in the door, so that means I'm the first one to the microphone. I'm Chris Jacobs. I'm pleased to be joining the team here at Celine. I'm a native of southeast Michigan, but I've been in DC for the last 10 years. Happy to be back. I graduated from Northville in 2003 high school. Hopefully, you'll forgive me for that. But I went to Miami of Ohio for an undergraduate degree in education, working on a graduate degree right now from the University of Virginia. And I've been back in Michigan for four weeks now and working mostly with freshmen at the high school in the world history classes. I'm having a good time so far, so go on. Thanks.
Welcome.
Welcome. Brooklyn Golf, Brooklyn Special Ed Golf Outing.
Hi there. I'm Angie Ramsey. I am the new school social worker. I'm between Celine Middle School and the Alternative High School and Young Adult Programming. I got my bachelor's in social work from Grand Valley and my master's from Wayne State, and I'm coming from Wayne Westland Community School District. Glad to be here.
Welcome. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Emily Petrus. I'm a speech language pathologist this year at Woodland Meadows. Just came from the Washtenaw ISD and happy to be here. I graduated my undergrad from Michigan State University. Go Green. And Eastern Michigan University for my master's. I've been a speech therapist for 14 years, so excited to be here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Minella Riedinger, and I am a first grade teacher at Harvest Elementary School. I graduated from the University of Toledo, and I moved to Michigan three years ago, and I'm super excited. I love my school. I love my kids, and I love all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Shaffer. I teach second grade at Harvest, and I graduated from Michigan State University. Go Green. And I am so happy to be here.
Hi, I'm Rachel Alyssa. I graduated from Celine in 2012, so Celine grad myself. Just graduated from the University of Michigan in April, so go Blue, sorry.
We're taking a tally.
As you can tell from my food coloring stain hands, I teach seventh grade style.
Welcome.
Good evening. Leanne Meyer, seventh and eighth grade, Language Arts at Celine Middle School. This is my sixth year teaching. I'm back home in Celine, and I previously taught in Northville. My undergrad is from Eastern Michigan University, and I'm working on my master's from Saginaw Valley.
Hi, everyone. I am Megan DeBruin, and I am ATC at the middle school. I got my undergrad from Michigan State, another Sparty. I got my master's at Wayne and my special ed endorsement from Madonna. This is my ninth year teaching, and I'm super excited to be here. Thanks for having me.
Hi, everyone. I'm Matt Pelletier. I'm teaching third grade at Woodland Meadows. Went to Western Michigan. Go Broncos. And this is my 10th year teaching. I taught for seven years down in North Carolina and two years in Royal Oak before moving out here. And yeah, loving it. So it's been a great experience so far, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Megan Coleman. I teach here at the Young Adult Program in the Life Skills. Taught for five and a half years at Wayne Westland Schools. I have my master's and my undergrad from Eastern Michigan University, so very excited to be here.
Hi, my name is Deanna Barzak. I'm a teacher here in Aunt Liberty, the Young Adult Program. I graduated with my master's from Wayne State.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Teresa Storey. I'm a third grade teacher here at Woodland. So excited to be here in Celine. I've had my sights set on Celine for years, just how wonderful the district is, and so I'm really excited. This is truly a dream come true. I taught in Monroe for eight years, third grade there too, so I love it. And I went to Eastern for my undergrad and very grateful for my master's. Thank you for having me.
Welcome. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Whitney Barr. I'm teaching Family and Consumer Science at the high school. I was in Wayne Westland for the last three years, teaching the same thing. I have my undergrad and my master's from Madonna University, and I'm super excited to be here. Everyone has been so helpful and awesome so far, so I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Chad O'Brien. I teach American history at the high school. So it's my 12th year of education, five of those down in Florida, and then last six at Adrian Public Schools right down the road there. Graduated from Adrian College, so thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisa Verlingame. I'm a school psychologist at Pleasant Ridge and Woodland Meadows. It was actually 15 years ago that I completed my internship here to be a school psychologist under Dr. Bob Mott. And I had such a great experience that it kept me in the field because I was unsure at the time, but it was such a great internship experience, I knew someday I would be back here. So I'm glad to be in Celine now, and I've been doing this for 14 years.
Welcome.
My name is Jennifer Macarroll. I teach kindergarten at Woodland Meadows. This is my 12th year teaching. I have my master's in early childhood education, and I'm excited to be here too. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Adamsky. I am at the middle school and high school, teaching German. This is my 20th year of education. I have kind of been all over and done some different things, so I'm excited to be back in the classroom, and I am from Adrian College, so go Bulldogs.
Hi, my name is Corbin Brown. I teach at the high school, AP Physics and Algebra II. Undergrad at Michigan State, grad program at Michigan State as well, with a master's in Educational Technology. Also, I have my current tech ed in Engineering and Technology. And I taught the past five years at Clinton High School, teaching math, physics, and engineering. So thank you.
Welcome.
Hola. I'm Astrid Lacy. I'm the new Spanish teacher at the middle school. I love it so far. I did my undergrad at the University of Puerto Rico, where I'm from, and I did my first master in Michigan State and my second master at Penn State. I'm super excited to be here. Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Austin, and I am super excited to be joining the kindergarten team at Pleasant Ridge. This is my 10th year of teaching, and I did my undergraduate work at Cedarville University, and I just recently finished my master's at Eastern. Again, thanks for having me. I'm super excited to be here.
Welcome.
My name is Teresa Stager. I am the assistant principal at Celine High School. This is my fourth year in administration. First year here, I came from Rockwood, Michigan, over by Lake Erie. I taught for eight years music in Anchor Bay. And undergrad from Wayne State University and my master's from U of M Dearborn. So thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Eric Floodke. I teach fifth through eighth grade choir, so I'm a heritage and a middle school. I am coming from six years of education from Dearborn Public Schools, and I am so thrilled to be here. I'm coming from Wayne State University and working on my master's currently at Oakland University. Thanks for having us.
Welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Paul McCullough. I'm actually a recent graduate from Celine High School, class of 2015, so go Hornets.
Two points to that.
I teach the metals classes, welding and fabrication, and project lead-the-way intro to engineering design. My experience so far at Celine has been absolutely amazing. I have great mentors, and everybody has been just so helpful and nice to do the process. So thank you very much.
Welcome back. Welcome back.
Hi, I'm Tracy Lamb. I'm a mentor teacher with the Celine Alternative School. I graduated from Humboldt College of Applied Arts and Sciences in Armagh, Ontario, and I started with Celine in 2008 as a parent educator, and I am so grateful to be back, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome back.
As you can see, there's some people that aren't going to be sending us Christmas cards this year because we did go to a couple other districts to hire some of the teachers, but really excited about this group of folks and certainly Mr. Green may ask something to say.
Yeah, obviously, we talk about the process to get hired in Celine, and certainly we receive a lot of applications. We receive a lot of interest, and you can tell from the group that we have that there are experienced teachers, there are new teachers that have been through our process, and I can tell you, we are very excited. It's a big group. I think that adds value to them as a group in terms of being able to connect with people who are new to the district and certainly has kept us on our toes. And one of the things we talked to them about is kind of this idea of being a sponge and learning about Celine area schools and what we're all about and the way we do business. But ultimately, they bring a lot of experiences to us, and we talk about trying to make sure we continue to get better and continuously improve, and the ideas and thoughts that they have and they've had from their experiences in college, but also from the districts they come from, will allow us to continue to move and evolve and get better as an organization. So couldn't be more excited. Ironically, there's still a bunch that are at Heritage with Open House, and this still kind of fills the back of the room. So it's a great group, and we're very excited to get the year underway. Thank you for coming, and you can leave now.
Get action. Kind of a motion to approve Grace Eberts to serve as the high school student representative to the Board of Education for the 2016-2017 school year. So moved.
Second.
All right. I'd like to call Grace Eberts up. She went through process with Mr. Raff along with several other applicants and emerged as the one that was nominated, so we'd like to have her talk a little bit about it before we go.
Hi, my name is Grace Eberts, and I have attended Celine Area Schools my whole life. I'm currently a senior at Celine High School, and I'm involved in Link Crews, Strive, and Project Outreach. I want to be part of the school boards because I want to go into education while I'm in college, so I thought that this would be a good experience for me to learn how a school district functions.
You don't get quite an education.
Yeah, we don't want to change your career path.
I don't have any other questions? No? We all had your bio in our packet, so I know. Read that. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven to zero. Welcome, Grace. Come on down. I know last year we had talked about having two student representatives. We decided to, next year, have a senior and a junior so that the junior could come with the senior, have a two-year continuity. So next year, we'll start that program. Thank you, Mr. Raff. Kind of a motion to approve Heidi Finesse to serve as the MASB delegate for the 2016-2017 school year. So moved.
Support.
Heidi, go for the task.
I guess so.
Does anyone have any questions for Heidi?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven to zero. Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of copy machines and duplicators from Applied Imaging as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner?
So we've had many, many copiers, or we do have many copiers in our district that are at least 10 years old, and our staff has suffered through a few years with them. We purchased some new machines about five years ago, and actually, they prefer the older machines than the new machines. They just were not right for a school district. So our tech department has been researching, you know, the copier that would be best. We're going to go back to the cannons, and we will be purchasing, I think it's 41 machines at a cost of $446,000. We also will be getting duplicator machines in the elementary so that they can copy construction paper, use construction during them. And we're really excited because all the copiers have a paper cut feature where you print to any copier, and then it doesn't print until you go and retrieve it. So even if you're in a different building, you can retrieve it. So we won't have a lot of jobs that are just sitting there and eventually get dumped. We will cut down on paper waste and all. And we also think that it will help eliminate the use of printers. Any printer copy is much more expensive than on a copier. And additionally, we'll have at least one color copier in every building, as well as athletics, community ed, and the superintendent's office. So we're very excited. Once the order's placed, we anticipate having them all placed in the buildings before the end of October.
And Dennis, I don't know if you know this question, but I'm just curious, in this electronic age, what we make a lot of copies of these days? I mean, is it work assignments or stuff that goes home with the kids and the parents? Or I'm just curious.
IEDs.
IEDs, okay.
That could be the number one.
I don't know if elementary, I'll let, David, you can speak to the secondary, but I'll, Betty, just talk a little bit about what's being copied in elementary.
At the elementary level, a lot of the things, especially in the younger grades, K1, the cutting, the fine motor, the fine motor stuff that the kids do that they need to, you know, make duplicates of to work on. That's why the duplicator is one of the things that's really important to us. We haven't had, and in terms of being able to extend the life of the copying machine, the duplicators are going to be able to run construction paper and other things that aren't real friendly to the copying machine.
I was just curious. I'm questioning their use.
No, certainly, you're right. In digital age, we are trying to reduce the amount of copying. David, at the secondary level, what's some of the copying, types of copying?
I haven't really figured it out at high school yet, but there is quite a bit at middle school at some point. I think with the math journals and some of the links that they do, instead of buying the books and doing all that, they can copy the links. So I think there is some of that when it comes to the math, every math program. It's definitely gone down over the years by a lot, but still, there's a large cost there.
Kyle gets a lot of study packets and stuff before exams and things from high school, so there's that.
David, you're going to look for review packets.
Review packets.
And they're all duplexed, I'm sure. Hopefully.
Yes, they are.
Okay, good.
From what I've seen, anyway.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries seven to zero. Kind of a motion to approve the updated swap management plan as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner. So moved.
So our swap management plans must be reviewed on an annual basis and updated if necessary. The updates in this plan are very minor. They're changing starter barge to PFM, updating the amortization schedules, things like that, dates. So there's no real change in the swap agreement itself. It's been reviewed by PFM and by EcoFinancial and also TruM.
So all those things that were in there about the risks and all that, they were in there before. I think we've had that discussion, so, okay.
The whole idea of the swap is to reduce the risk, but there's still risk.
Yeah, I was reading through some of the risks and thinking, you know, looking at the stock market.
It would be worse without it.
That's true. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries seven to zero. Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of servers, fiber switches, and storage array from Dell as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner?
So moved.
Support.
So this purchase will replace our current virtual server that's about six years old. It's at a cost of $121,500, and we're purchasing it through Dell, Midwest Higher Education Commission Cooperative, so it did not need to be developed. And actually, that's the same with the copiers. They were bought with cooperative pricing, so it didn't need to be developed.
I have a question, because I've been on vacation. So these last set of stuff lasted six years. Do we have an anticipated length of year on these ones that we know of? Or, I mean, I just, I mean, everyone kind of complains about spending money on technology that doesn't last very long.
Well, and I think, this is my guess, that the issue is that it keeps changing so rapidly that you really need to replace it, you know, every six to 10 years to stay current.
I know that the bid talked about speed and getting us up to current standards.
I would say probably less than 10. Longer than six, hopefully, but, and then I would also need to get probably bits and pieces depending on, because obviously, there's still some fiber that we continue to use that we purchased years ago, which is often updated. I'm just curious.
And the way technology changes, you can't predict that. That's why it has to be paid off so quickly, because you never know how long it's going to take.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries seven to zero. Are those going to be installed soon or delivered?
I'm not sure what the actual delivery, I don't think it's too.
Fall.
Yeah, I think it's.
They're going to kick with the technology and some of the other FNF stuff. There will continue to be bond-related activities throughout the year. That's not a set. Construction stuff largely starts and stops with the school year, but.
The school adequacy report.
Wanted to provide an update to the board related to that. So as you know, I sent that out earlier this summer, almost this spring. The school commissioned, or pardon me, the state of Michigan commissioned an adequacy study relative to school funding. And if you recall, that was part of a kind of a deal that got made during a lame duck session that occurred in December relative to getting some full voting done related to school funding and some other policy issues. And the kind of premise behind it was to determine what is the cost to educate a child? We get $7,400 and change or so, and ultimately, is that an adequate amount? Is that not an adequate amount? And so it's a fairly complex, a simple question, I guess, with a complex answer. And so the state commissioned an organization to conduct an adequacy study, and in looking at it, really tried to factor in and out certain issues of geography, the relative market associated with everything from labor and other resources in certain geographic areas of the state. They did something that is both, it works from a standpoint of, if you want to really understand it, they really removed the whole concept of special education and the costs associated with educating students with special needs out. And some may say, well, that's not, that's not accurate then, because schools have students that need to have special needs and costs associated with that. It becomes too complex, and so I think they really tried to say, okay, let's get this to a point where we can make some relatively accurate assumptions associated with cost. And in doing so, they kind of determined that there were districts that were adequately funded, there were districts that weren't adequately funded, and that ultimately, the state needs to decide. I think $8,100 was the dollar figure that kind of came out in the neighborhood of what they felt was inadequate average, noting in their report that nothing is average about any specific district. And so what I think you're seeing now is MASB has taken this up and really trying to say, okay, let's analyze that a little bit more, determine what are some of the things from a policy standpoint that school boards and other school-related organizations can talk to the legislature about now that they have some of this data. I will say it's gotten, people have kind of shot holes at their methodology in certain areas. Frankly, as I looked at the study, I felt like they did about as good as you're going to do. It is, you know, a little bit like nailing slime to a wall. It's just very hard to really factor in all of the different things in a question like that. But I do credit them for looking at it, and I credit also the organizations that are going to continue to try to use that to do a little deeper dive.
To me, it's difficult to go district by district to see how they're spending the money. I mean, some districts may spend more on whatever category, not instructional, and spend more on administration, or this or that, so the factors were kind of, you know, a little hard to do with the number of districts in the state.
And it was hard to kind of extrapolate from that, because ultimately, one of the things we do, as soon as we try to make some, to learn a little bit about what we're doing relative to our financial patterns, we look at peer districts. This looked at everybody, and so it's a little bit easier when you can boil it down to similar districts that have similar parameters, and then looking at, like you said, where are the dollars going for your similar dollars and similar results? Where are you spending your money? So I think from our standpoint, from a true learning about what we're doing and benchmarking, we look at EDICs and some of these other data sets that we have, that probably is a little more, a little better for us in terms of what we're trying to learn about our district and how we're financially set up. This one, I think, is a little bit broader policy, kind of, is the state's investment in education adequate? And then ultimately, I think the state's question is, is our investment in education returning the type of result that we want it to return? And I think that's where the politicians are going to be debating in the fall.
I know, and I meant to look for it, I couldn't find it. The Free Press looked at the amount of money that was spent in the period of the study, I think, on schools versus the 200% that we spent on prisons. So, you know, it's kind of one of those, you need to teach them to stay out of prison kind of thing, but they're spending all that money on that, so instead of education. So I think it's a good conversation starter and lancing.
Yeah, I think that the conversation starter is really the point. If you notice, I think I shared with the board that Brian Winston did send letters out to districts that were seen as, were tagged as exemplars within the study, and that was one that we were, and if you want, I can share that again, but it was nice to get that. And I think it's, as we've looked at our financial kind of footprint or our profile, we continue to operate very efficiently, and I think that's something that was recognized through that. So I feel like they did a nice job of at least analyzing districts. The question still becomes, from a policy standpoint, if you have a pie, where are you going to invest that money? And how do you, if you want to transition it from corrections to education, what does that look like? But it'll be interesting in the fall conference, and maybe Heidi can pick up on this, I think they're going to have some sessions around this adequacy study and what types of policy initiative will come out of it.
Yeah, once we get a new legislature, the first of the year, it'll be interesting to see who's there and what their thoughts are for next year.
It'll be a very interesting fall, for sure.
Gave us that carrot this year, you never know what will happen next year, so. Any other questions? Policy committee update, Secretary Delaney?
Really, there hasn't been much of an update since our last report. It's been quiet over the summer. We're still working through the social media policy and what that's going to look like. We're at a bit of a wait still, depending on what the state's going to do with that. So as of right now, that's all we have, but our next meeting is September 19th at 5:00 PM.
We're going to go off the chart here a little bit, and just an extension of our policies. Mr. Mark is going to give us a quick bind-up date.
I want to quick, you know, Mark came down, and Mark had some other responsibilities, but he came and wanted to make sure to be here tonight, because I think we are very proud of what we were able to accomplish, and so I'm glad he's here and able to share a little bit more about Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. I know back in December, I think it was December 14th, when King Scott and Clark was hired, the question was, will you be able to complete $12 million or $13 million this summer? And as Superintendent Grayden mentioned, all the schools opened as planned, we were able to complete over $12 million worth of work this summer, with the help of the district. As Mr. Andrea mentioned, the district, its administration, their board has been outstanding to work with. The decisions made has made this summer a complete success. In addition to being, completing the work, that physical work that we completed this summer, the 2017 work is well on its way. Design has started, and our initial estimates have been brought forth, and we are planning in the next two weeks to have the next, I'll say, the next phase of design for the '17 work to proceed. What we're looking forward to in the next summer is approximately a little bit more work to be completed, also as we're vetting out the final cost for this work, to develop what is, what can be spent to make sure that we stay under the full bond amount for the next summer's worth of work. But I believe, to my knowledge, and all the reports from the schools, everything opened as scheduled, so I'm very happy to report that, reporting the other stuff that Superintendent Grayden said in other districts, you know, that we do not, we as a group will not allow that to happen. So, any questions? And I apologize, the board report got a little late, there was some hiccups that I had personally that wasn't able to get accomplished, so I apologize with that, and if anyone does have questions, feel free to contact Ms. Warner or Mr. Grayden, and we'll be more than happy to answer anything.
I just think, thank you. I think everything looks amazing. We did a walkthrough a few weeks back, and I think you guys did a phenomenal job, and I'm really impressed that you got it done in time, and so, kudos to you guys.
Thank you, and I'll relay that back to the entire team.
Great.
I was wondering, is there a process for feedback from the staffs in the building about some things? I mean, they have all this nice stuff, but maybe new ideas for next cycle or continuing?
I mean, yes, and there's still the steering committee, so in fact, we've kind of simultaneously, in about the first part of August, started planning for 2017, and that was one of the things that were...like this, particularly this space, and the way we function with kind of community ed office is on the docket to be renovated next year. So we've already started kind of, so the feedback is almost informed in an ongoing basis. I'm certain that within a month or two, we'll get some feedback specifically from, you know, using Pleasant Ridge and some of the other spaces. The feedback relative to that loop is happening daily, where, you know, the principals are monitoring one of the, for example, one of the questions, and Tim and I will be talking about this fall, is that we have so many parents that come and park and to drop off their student, and literally walk them in the first few days of school, and that, will it, would we, if we were to offer an open house, where they meet the teacher, they see the classroom, they go to the building, to lessen that, because we had some chaos there because of that particular function? I asked Lauren Washington, how did the bus loop, or how did the parent loop go the first day? She says it was great, hardly anybody used it. So I think that's, those are the types of things where we're learning about from a process standpoint. Now, Pleasant Ridge, you know, some of the functionality of, I think, because the renovations were largely replacement in nature, the function of the building really is largely the same. I will tell you, the majority of the feedback right now is around the security process, the physical thing. We have a lot of capability now related to electronic locking, being able to go on your phone and turn locks on, open buildings, closed buildings, doors and things, literally from almost anywhere. That's great, that's a lot of capability. We kind of went from the proverbial outhouse to the White House of capability, and so we're not sure how to manage the White House yet. I really, really do need to kind of think about, okay, what is the best way for us to make, you know, is it still a process where we do kind of manually set some locks? What types of default locking systems do we have in place? I think that's the thing right now, that the feedback's coming. I would say, from a standpoint of the principal discussions today, we learned about a way with your badge, now that we can double lock it, tap to lock a door or to unlock a door, and how that system works, so. Short, long way to answer, yeah, there's a lot of feedback.
I just, I mean, you always learn the feedback, so as we're planning future stuff, keep in mind.
With the open houses too, and maybe some parents look...
Yeah. The one thing I will tell you, this morning, we had the folks in from Barton Malag, who's a consultant through King Scott related technology, and talking about surveillance. And so with administrative, we discussed, what are the finer points? We have about 300 cameras set to be deployed next year, and while that may seem like a lot, I think we figured out right now, there's already 75 at the high school. So we really need to think about strategically, about what it is we want to monitor, what are the areas that are important, and what's important at an elementary building, may not be important at the secondary level, what's important at secondary level. So I think from a standpoint of our planning process, it's almost simultaneous right now in terms of really the fact that 2016 works over, the reality is 2017 worked. We have more time, we're using it to hopefully be effective.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of August 9th, 2016. B, approval of the special Board of Education meeting minutes of August 16th, 2016. Approval of the Board Policy Committee meeting minutes of August 16th, 2016. D, approval of the special Board of Education meeting of September 1st, 2016. E, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of September 13th, 2016, in the amount of $1,655,581.19. F, receiving and filing September curriculum, finance, and human resources reports. G, approval of payment of bond fund accounts payable of September 13th, 2016, in the amount of $4,973,483.87. And H, approval of the early graduation requests as submitted by Superintendent Grayden.
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Items on the next agenda, I know we have a budget committee meeting Thursday, 5:30.
This meeting will largely be a closed session. We will obviously open in public session, but we have Collins and Blaha coming, and we'll be talking about collective negotiations, which will be starting shortly.
October, we have schools on the visit list, right?
We do.
I'm trying to remember too, but it doesn't matter for this meeting.
This is a second opportunity for anyone to make public comment. Would anyone like to make public comment? The next meeting of the Board of Education will be held on September 27th, 2016, at 6:30 PM here at the Liberty School Media Center. Kind of a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of September 13th, 2016, at 7:12 PM. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.